Okay, got it. Okay, the Blue Lake City Council meeting of August 24th, 2021 is beginning. And we are having some of this by Zoom per government code. And item one is our pledge of allegiance, which because we're all in separate places, I'm going to just pass over at this point. I am going to ask for establishment of a quorum of the council by our city clerk, April Sousa, who's sitting in as city clerk.
I'm a former city clerk, but yes, thank you. So council member, Karen. If you said something, okay, I can see your hand, I just cannot hear you.
We can't hear you.
Council member Doherty. Council member Hogan. I only get to see half of Elaine there. Council member McCreath. And Adeline Jones, Mayor Jones.
Here.
So everybody rose their hand for the record, I just let me all know that.
Okay, we have a quorum of the council. Item two is approval of the agenda. Is there anyone from council that would like to change anything that's on the agenda? Anyone from public that would like to change anything? I'd like a motion then to approve the agenda as delivered.
Oh. From mute now. Yep, so we're muted up there.
That's clear. Oh, but.
No, we, okay, can you hear us now?
Now, yes, yes, and that is definitely much clearer.
Yes, that's good. Okay, so we're asking now for an approval of the agenda as delivered.
They'll move. I second.
Okay, moved by Summer Doherty, seconded by Elaine Hogan. Is there any further discussion from council? Anything from audience? Back to council for the vote, all in favor, raise your hand. Oh, we'll have a, excuse me, we'll have a roll call vote, please, April Sousa.
All right, council member Karen.
Yeah.
Council member Doherty.
Yes.
Council member Hogan.
Yes.
Council member McCreath.
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes. Okay, we have an agenda. Item three, public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake. That is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment? Either raise your hand or put up the little hand icon. Okay, I see Lynn Glenn has her hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Adeline. I just had a question about the Powers Creek project. I know last meeting, there was a general update on the project, and I don't see that on the current agenda. I see two items about the negotiation, but no general update, and I'm wondering if that's gonna happen.
Mandy, are you going to do an update in your staff report? On the Powers Creek?
Yes, we can give an update during those two agenda items.
Okay, thank you.
So you're gonna be doing an update during item five, is that correct?
We can update during both of those items.
Okay, five and during your staff report on item 12. Okay. Did that answer your question, okay Lynn?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are now on item four. Oh, is there any other further public comment? I didn't see any other hands. So seeing no other hands, I will move on. Item four, local road safety program project update. This is a presentation only. And Mike, are you taking this one?
Yes. So really just kind of introducing what we're doing with the local road safety plan. And so part of what this is about is federal highways, is where we get a lot of our transportation dollars funneled through. Have, they're trying to take a proactive stance on how we address road safety. Traditionally, you look at accidents and you document the amount of accidents, and then then retroactively go back and try and mitigate, say, a poor intersection or a street where there's a lot of accidents. And and they're trying to get to the zero accident. You know, they're setting a big goal to really reduce amount of fatalities and accidents in local roads. Forty percent of fatalities happen on local roads, which is like three times what you'll have on highways. So their way to look at it is in the past, like I said, looking at accidents. Well, now what they want to do is, well, let's look at accidents, but then let's also look at what's called the near miss. Like, there was no accident, no one got hurt, there's no collision. But say there was, you know, there was this almost near miss, and there's a lot more near misses than there are accidents. So they want to collect that data. And from that, you look at that geometry or how that intersection or road is oriented. And then you look within your community to go, okay, are there similar intersections where we can apply maybe the same solution or treatment? So they're, you're going from reactive to proactive. Okay, so that's the whole stance of this new local road safety program, and they're going out to all the communities. So right now, we're in the first phase, we're in the data gathering phase. Unfortunately for Blue Lake, you know, with the sheriff now, they don't record accidents. So we don't have, there's databases you typically will go to to see where there's an accident was recorded. And we have, it's called TMS, and we have this database. Well, Blue Lakes is not populated. So what we're doing is we're trying to get out a survey, two different surveys. One for any accidents that you know of or aware of that have occurred in the last five years. The other survey is any near misses. And that includes bike, ped, car, you know, all these things. We want a safe community within town. So we're, we've uploaded that, it's on the Facebook page for Blue Lake, and it's also on our webpage. So, you know, I encourage people to let folks know about those two surveys. And it's only open for another week. Okay, and then with that data, we're gonna collect that, and we're gonna work with some of the local group and community members within Blue Lake and kind of look at that data. And and from there, we're gonna start looking at what are the common themes? What were the issues? And then work our way towards maybe some potential mitigations. And we're looking at like low-cost solutions too that can be applied for. And and then that's part of developing of our plan. And with that local road safety plan, we'll be eligible to apply for funds through federal highways, through what's called the H-CIP program, which is Highway Safety Improvement Plan funds. So that's kind of our overall approach to this. So again, just more announcing what we're doing with our plan. You know, we got funds through, through federal highways, through, in HCOG, and we're using those funds to study these streets. And and some of the info that we applied on the truck route, you know, we already kind of have been doing some of this work on the truck route. And now we're looking community-wide, not just a truck route. So that, that's pretty much the gist of it. I'd just be real quick on that, but and any questions on that? You're on mute, Adeline.
Okay, Mike, sorry. Is there any other way that we can get this information out to people through either our Public Safety Committee or Facebook account or something on our water bill? Maybe something below, I don't know, we're not, we don't have that many figures to use at the bottom. But I'm wondering if there is some way to get this information.
Well, Mandy and I were interviewed today, so it's on Channel 3, so that's one way to get it out.
Good.
Yeah, we'll see how that goes. Anyway, so, so, you know, so we're on TV. So we did kind of do like an outreach, you know, to some of the, some of the media outlets about this. I'm just kind of looking at some of the folks that we reached out to. And then again, I'm working with Mandy, and we're gonna get with, you know, with the school and the fire department and, you know, some of the other community groups and kind of take this data and then kind of work as a working group to look at those, that whatever feedback we get from the two different surveys, any, any other data we can gather, and then start developing our, our local road safety plan. And it's kind of nice, federal, federal highways, kind of, they've done a really good job of kind of setting up a boilerplate template to kind of walk you through the process, so.
And I think that Mandy already posted the links on the Blue Lake events page, which, to be clear, is not actually the city's web, the Facebook page that's hosted by a local community member. So that link's already been posted there. And then I don't know if it's on Nextdoor or anything like that, but it's.
Yeah, I haven't used Nextdoor for so long, I don't know if I.
Yeah, I'm the.
Yeah.
I'm pretty bad at social media, texting is a leap for me. So I'm the last person to discuss social media.
I did also get it on the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. It was in their newsletter.
Oh, good.
So it did go up. We sent it out to the school, asking them to send it to parents with the packet for the, you know, the first week of school and encouraging them, especially the school with the near misses, bus routes and all of that, to encourage people to take that survey.
Yeah, we reached out to, you know, the Ranchery as well, you know, Friends of the Andy Mary, RCMBA, you know, the Local Mountain Bike Club. There's a lot of folks that come through here on that, so. Yeah, and then, you know, Time Standard and, and the union. So we did try to get out to a lot of the media outlets on what we're, what we're, what we're doing. But, you know, it's Blue Lake, word of mouth is, helps a lot. You go tape something up at the post office.
Just, I think, just the flyer that you have here, basically, this front page.
Yeah.
Here, maybe post that around. But one of your things on here was to ask the council for input and assistance in spreading the word about the survey. So are there other things that we can do other than just conversations with the city or anything specific you can think of that came to mind?
No, I think, like I said, just trying to reach out amongst our different groups in town. You know, I know I've already heard some people talking about filling it out, so I know some folks have already been contacted. So I've got some feedback this weekend already, so.
Thank you very much, Mike. Are there any questions from council? This is a presentation item only.
Yeah, when does the window close again?
Next Tuesday, so the 31st.
Thank you.
You know, and again, if someone's trying to get info, get it to City Hall, because we're just, you know, we're just trying to set this window for that. But, you know, so we have a data set to work with, but I'm sure if things are trickling into City Hall or whatever, we'll try and incorporate into that. Because we still have to set up a meeting with our working group. And we haven't set that date yet, but we're working towards that.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any other questions from council? Anything from the public concerning this item? Seeing no hands, I will again thank Mike for doing his work on this. It's a very thorough survey, and I appreciate it. And we certainly have people that have been concerned about some traffic issues. So this will be a good thing to compile. So thank you again.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge Justin Delgado and Jared Goble, who helped me at SHN. They did a really nice job pulling a lot of this together. I'm just presenting it, so I'd give the credit to them. But anyway, all right, thanks.
All right, very good. Okay. Yes. Okay.
Bye, Mike.
All right, we're moving on to item five. Appoint real property negotiators, Government Code Section 54956.8. The property, approximately three acres of a parcel located at APN numbers and 025-201-023, Blue Lake, California. City of Blue Lake negotiators, Amanda Mager, City Manager Russell Gann, City Attorney Adeline Jones, Mayor, and one additional council member to be appointed. Negotiating parties will be the Danco Group, Chris Dart, Haley Del Grande, under negotiation, potential ground lease and/or property sale price terms of payment. What has happened here is that we lost one of our negotiating people. So we need to appoint another person to be a negotiator in this. I would like to continue as one of the negotiators, if it's the pleasure of the council. And is there anyone else that would like to be part of this?
Yeah, I'm willing to be part of it. I think it's an interesting process, and I've done a good amount of contract negotiation with the county, so I would be willing to unless there's anyone else that wants to. I would nominate Elaine Hogan.
I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Summer Doherty to appoint Elaine Hogan to the negotiating team. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris Kiran seconds. Motion is second, any further discussion from council? Any discussion from public? Back to council for the roll call vote.
Council member Kiran.
Yeah.
Council member Doherty.
Yeah.
Council member Hogan.
Yes.
Council member McCreath.
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes. Okay, we have our negotiating team. Thank you, Elaine, for stepping up on this item. All right, we're moving on then to item six. Exclusive negotiating agreement with Danco Communities. Review, approve exclusive negotiating agreement with Danco Communities, a California corporation, for potential ground lease on City of Blue Lake real property with the aforementioned numbers. The city is working with Danco Communities on the development of a mixed-use affordable housing project in the Powers Creek District. The city and developers desire to establish, by this agreement, a general framework for good faith negotiations concerning the terms and conditions by which the city would enter into a DDA with developer or developers affiliated, designee, for the purposes of owning and developing the project and to the extent necessary to accomplish the project, would sell or lease its right title and interest to the property and to the developer. Additionally, the parties wish to provide for the reimbursement of the city by developer for certain expenses to be incurred by the city in undertaking the consideration of the obligations under this agreement and the preparation of the DDA and other entitlements required to undertake the project. And we have background material that was in our packet. I'm not sure if Russ wants to handle this or Amanda. Is that who would like to introduce this more to us?
I think Russ is on the phone somewhere. Oh, there he is.
Yes, certainly, I can give a brief synopsis for the council if the mayor would like. Basically, Danco, in facilitation of the negotiation, has asked for an exclusive negotiating, an exclusive negotiation agreement to discuss the potential ground lease of the subject property. The purpose, of course, is they're expending substantial resources in investigating the issue and the potential feasibility of a project and development there. And would like to know that they're negotiating in isolation for that purpose, which is relatively common. The council should note that this agreement in no way binds the city to lease or sell the real property to Danco, pending any future negotiation by the city for a ground lease or sale. And this is just preliminary, it's a representation and commitment to negotiate, but not a binding obligation to commit the real property to any specific purpose. So after any public comment that council may receive, I would recommend the council consider entering the agreement at this point in time. There's one blank that's relatively important that we need to insert before the city manager were to sign and return the agreement to Danco, and that is basically the square footage that would be required of any onsite commercial retail, ground floor commercial retail that the city would be looking to include in any future development agreement, should the parties ultimately prove fruitful in negotiating a development agreement and entering a binding agreement. But again, to be clear, this does not bind the city to lease or sell the property to Danco, does not bind the city to any specific development agreement or other form of development for the property. It's simply an acknowledgement of commitment to negotiate with them as an exclusivity during the time period stated. Absent any questions, that's the summary.
Thank you. Russell is our city attorney, and I see there are hands already up. I'm going to ask first if the council has any questions. I know I, I have a couple. One, I was wondering, Russ, why the map of the property was blank? Is that to also be filled in? The page with the map is blank.
Sorry, that's been prepared. Perhaps it wasn't included in the packet. It's, it's a scanned aerial, but it's simply a aerial depiction of the area that's involved.
Okay, maybe I just didn't get it. I don't know if other council persons did. I just got a blank page.
But basically, Adeline, it's basically just a parcel map. It's not anything fancy. It's just a parcel boundary, which it's been in multiple packets in our past, but it's, yeah, it's just a parcel boundary to do any of the area that we're talking about.
Okay, great, thanks. Are there any questions from the council on this item?
Yeah, a quick one about, so item B in the recital, that's the one that Russ says we need to determine a square footage for mixed-use development and commercial space, or that also entails or refers to number 4B on the second page. But how do we determine the square footage? And what, or do we say up to or not to exceed minimum? Like, what, what you recommend?
Yeah, to be clear, it's just, both references are just a statement of approximate square footage. The purpose is simply to, so both parties acknowledge that the city is looking for ultimate inclusion of that ground floor retail commercial space as a component of any development agreement, should the parties actually succeed in negotiating one. So anyway, we just wanted to kind of put it in a benchmark, because we know we've already discussed with the council that we're contemplating a development to exceed approximately 40 residential units, approximately in that range. But we also have the, the council was clear on the commercial retail component of the project. So I think, Mandy, you had estimates of what the parties were contemplating, but I believe it was in the range of approximately 20,000 square feet. Please correct me what the current recommendation would be to the council to include on that.
Yeah, and we have been looking at 20,000 with 44 residential units. It feels a little bit heavy on the commercial side, honestly. But the zone also dictates the amount of commercial space required. So we were just trying to figure out what seems like a reasonable number to put in the agreement, or do you allow the zone itself to dictate based upon the residential square footage? Because there is a percentage that's identified. So I think at the time of bringing this forward, we weren't necessarily sure, because the, the design itself is still in, it's very much in infancy, and trying to look at how those numbers get pushed around. So there's kind of, kind of a box that we were, that we were working in, but not knowing, you know, specific numbers. So I don't know if there's a possibility of putting a range in there, Russ, or what you would recommend.
I would recommend simply inserting approximately 20,000 square feet. Again, to be clear, this is just kind of a general statement as to what the parties will be seeking to negotiate. It's not a binding agreement with respect to the property. That'll come back to the council for consideration and public review prior to any agreements entered. So if, I would recommend simply inserting approximately 20,000 square feet in those blanks, submit to the council first.
Thank you, Russ, on that clarification. Also, under F on the first page, it says mutually executed by both parties by 4:00 PM on blank 2021. What date do you think we should put in there?
I, I think seven to 10 days is reasonable. We just want some certainty that Danco signs and returns it, you know, after the city approves it.
Oh, so, like August 31st or something, or September 1st or something like that?
Yeah, September 1st would probably be, yeah, that's Wednesday, that'd be a good day.
Okay. September 1st then should go into F, and then under B, we should put 20,000, approximately 20,000 square feet. And then on the second page, it says area median income as well as approximately, that should also say 20,000 square feet of light industrial.
Correct.
I think that is the only ones. Any further questions or comments from council before I open it to the public?
Yeah, I, I feel like maybe that's a, why, why wouldn't we just defer to our current code and say the, you know, mixed-use development would include square footage determined by our current code zoning ordinance based on the retail or based on the residential units that are also built into this, into the design? I don't know, I just, like, we went through so much work to go through the ozone. Why wouldn't we just refer to it so that, that's ultimately what would determine the commercial space anyways?
Yeah, to be candid, I don't think we need to get that specific at this point in time. It is the development agreement that this agreement references. That will be the very precise agreement that will be negotiated with Danco and will include every component of the restrictions, including the light residential commercial development obligation, the total number of residential units. And again, all that'll come back to the council. So, but, you know, we're just, you have a rough proportional number, just so parties are clear going into it. This isn't a circumstance where the city's contemplating just a minimal amount of light industrial. So we're just looking for a general kind of square footage recital.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from the city council before I open it to our public? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and then open it to public. I see Lisa Hooper has her hand raised. Go ahead, Lisa.
Hello, hi, hi, thank you. Yeah, I think the question, I don't know who it was about it. It was the square footage question, was, I was curious about that. And as to what's, what determines that size? So some of the discussion y'all just had helped with that. Is 20,000 as an estimate, is that for both the housing and the light industrial? Because I got a little mixed, there were some mixed responses. Because you said put 20,000 into 4B, but that's basically referencing the light industrial only. So it seems like F would be different. I guess I'm confused on what 20,000 covers.
Just the retail, commercial and the industrial.
Yeah, just the retail commercial, Lisa, is the, is the blank there for the 20,000 on B. On F, it's a date, September 1st, 2021, giving the other party enough time to sign this agreement. So it is just the commercial. It doesn't include the 40 units above.
Okay, and there was, I heard Mandy say 44 units, and, but the written here is 40 units, so I'm confused. 40 or 44?
There's approximately 40 units.
Approximately 40 units. Okay, I guess that's all, thank you. Thanks, Lisa. Lynn, I see your hand up, go ahead, Lynn Glenn.
Yeah, thank you, Adeline. So I recall when the, when the council first started talking about this project, I thought that the, they were asked specifically for a commitment to considering it. And I thought there was some discussion that the long-term lease versus sales was important to them, and, and there wasn't really much of a commitment for a sale, selling the property. And, and there wasn't really much of a commitment for a sale, selling the property outright to anybody. And I'm wondering, that's still in the contract, and I'm wondering if that still is being considered seriously? And if so, what the council thinks about that?
Thanks for your question, Lynn. As you know, I have always been a strong proponent of leasing the land, not selling it. I think what we have here is just a fairly border plate agreement, leaving all options open. But it's, it's my feeling from talking to citizens and the council that our tendency is to lease the property only.
Okay, I certainly support you on that. Thanks, Adeline. I'm wondering about the rest of the council and how the rest of, rest of the council feels about that.
I'm on the same page. And in this agreement, specifically in the recital G, it specifically says that this, and as Russ said, that this does not obligate the city to either lease or sell at this point. This is simply a commitment to work with a developer. And this is very similar to what we did with Pacific Builders several years ago. And it's just, you know, that we're, we're committing our time and staff and council time to working with a developer to come up with ideas and to present it to the community and, and come up with something that's mutually agreeable. But this, so this is like Russ said, not something that actually commits us to doing either. So that would be future discussions and negotiations with Danco or, you know, whoever ends up building potentially down there on, on what we do. But I, I am, I agree with Adeline. I also agree with Adeline. It's one of the city's biggest assets to own property. So I'm definitely not interested in selling, selling city land.
I'm also in agreeance with the leasing. I think looking into the future, that it's going to be a more sustainable option for the city.
I'm siding with pro-lease. I think that maintaining the asset and having it approved upon is better than selling the asset.
And just to, just to tell you too, that all that we've, all the discussions we've had with Danco, we have made it fairly clear to them, I mean, crystal clear, that we are all in favor of leasing the property, not selling it. And based on that, they still want to move forward. So I think we're on the same page as far as that goes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Lynn. Thank you for your question. Lisa, did you have another question or you just still have your hand up there?
Well, at first I still had my hand up there, but then I came up with another question. So I took it down and I put it back up, but this is, I understand this, this, this agreement here, the exclusive negotiating agreement will have, what's the timeline for after this is signed? For, I mean, just a guesstimate of a timeline for when you will be entering to more formal terms of this agreement? And the second part of that is, will the public be involved when those details are developed? So there's one question about the timeline. When do you anticipate maybe, and I know it could, are we talking about, so that's many years out or, you know, by December thirty-first or, and then about public involvement in those details? So those are my two questions. Thank you. And I'm gonna take my hand down.
Thank you, Lisa. Amanda, did you want to go ahead and, and answer that as far as the timeline goes? It's, it's really hard to, to tell.
Sure. Well, the council approved a consulting attorney contract for us to consult with a attorney group that specializes in these types of agreements. So Russ and I have a conference call, I believe, tomorrow to talk with the consulting attorney to review the DDA that Danco has provided. These are really kind of boilerplate template agreements that you get used a lot in different development projects, especially affordable housing projects. There's a lot of considerations that the city needs to look at as far as entitlements that would be attached to the funding application. So we, none of us really have that expertise or that experience when it comes to these types of projects under the affordable housing criteria. So we are consulting with this attorney to make sure that the city is protected and adequately plans and asks for appropriate entitlements. And that any lease agreement that's brought back to the council will be structured appropriately and in the city's best interest. Ultimately, the city is a partner in this project, especially when it comes to the lease agreement for the land. It actually makes us more competitive for funding applications. It makes us, puts us in a better position to instill that blue lake still and flavor in the development and really puts us in the driver's seat as a partner. So there's a lot of opportunities for the community to be involved in the process. I think it's been fairly clear that the council is interested in moving this forward. There are a lot of funding applications out right now that could be applied for, for this project. And so we, we need to keep it on, you know, clicking forward fairly rapidly. But I think through the process of looking at design options and details, there's a lot of opportunity for the community to be involved. And ultimately, it should be a fun process. I mean, it's really our first big project as a community. And it should be something that is engaging and, but ultimately, we're trying to get to an end point, which is, you know, this development project. So I would say that we are moving fairly rapidly with the DDA to be able to bring it back to council for consideration. And the rest of the project will, will continue to move forward with, you know, through the design process, the community scoping and the planning sessions that have been talked about. So I don't know, Russ might have some additional information on timeframe, but I think we've been kind of working with this end goal to move this forward as quickly as possible.
Yes, I, I concur with Mandy. I think the public could reasonably expect this to be returned to a city council agenda sometime within the next thirty to sixty days, at least at a minimum for an update on the progress of the development agreement and coordinating it with the site schematic kind of plans that, that have already been started and considered. And I know shared with the public prior meeting. So the two things are working in conjunction. So the development agreement will also seek to incorporate a lot of elements on the mutually agreed upon design, of course, for the ultimate project. But I think the public can expect an update in the next thirty to sixty days or some activity on that. Approximately next thirty days or so, probably working out the details of the development agreement itself. I think then in conjunction, a little less certain how quickly the actual schematic and site plan elevations will develop that, that the developers ultimately proposing for the council's consideration.
And, yeah, I just, because Mandy, you mentioned there were some grants that were, some grant applications. With, are those going to bind the city to do, go one way or another? I don't know what the grants to which you're referring, to what, what are their details? Because it seems like if you, I mean, I write grants too. If you write grants, you need to have a purpose and need and some intent of moving forward. And I just, if, I don't know if these are general or maybe the nature of them doesn't get into the details. But you mentioned grants and your, your response to my question. So what are those grants and what are their, what is their purpose?
Yeah, absolutely. They, I mean, they absolutely bind the, the city to a project to, you know, and that's, that's what this DDA is also establishing, is what the city's commitment is to this project. You know, we've been, we've been going down a pathway to get to a point where the city has something concrete to consider. So we've been doing a little bit of preliminary design work. We've been looking at infrastructure needs. We've been doing some preliminary, you know, assessments of different aspects of the development, whether that wastewater, fire suppression, access, transportation, all those issues that, you know, need to be considered preliminarily to get you to a point where you have an actual project scope to kind of look at and, and see if it's, you know, the direction you want to go. But, you know, we've been, we've been working on this for, for, well, about three years with the ozone to get us to a point where we have the capacity to take on a project like this. So I think the understand, my understanding of my role at this point is to continue to move this forward, lay the groundwork and the foundation for the project to come to council with additional details to get us to the point where we have a, a DDA with a developer. And then we would be working with the developer on securing funding. Danco does have kind of a niche when it comes to writing for affordable housing projects. They're, they're very skilled at the tax credit arena. And those would all be, you know, funding sources that we'd be looking at ultimately to fund this project. So this project also brings with it opportunities to make improvements to our wastewater system, our transportation system, our, you know, safe routes to school, the trail. So we're looking at all of those aspects. And these funding sources are, you know, coming down the pipe fairly quickly and fairly consistently. And right now especially, California has a lot of money to put towards these projects because there is this thing called a housing crisis that we're, you know, all struggling with. And so we're trying to, to get ourselves to the point where we're lined up in a very solid position to be a co-applicant with Danco or to be the, the prime applicant or, you know, just to be a signatory supporting entity for any application. So we're kind of running multiple pathways at once, but really the end result is to bring something concrete to council for them to consider and ultimately move towards a construction project. I think that's the end goal of what we're looking at.
Okay, it all sounds very positive, but I guess it doesn't seem to have, there aren't many venues there for public, public thoughts. You know, I remember Kit Mann was on the, the, the session I was attending in back in July, I believe. And there were some thoughts there, but it sounds like if you're writing grants now for, for concrete items and the funding comes, where does the public come in for this? I don't, I don't see that option. I mean, I know y'all have been doing this for three years and I, like I said, I am coming into this kind of late. But, and there was so, the suggestion of having public forums and, Adeline, I got your message today about, yeah, the, the current condition with the virus has put sort of some stalemate on that. But what are these public forums for if you've already made up your mind?
Well, I think what you, I think the, the honest answer is that the public input comes in more at the design stage. This is the council's responsibility at this point to, you know, move through the minutia and the fine details of this project. And when it comes to a project like this, you know, there, there are additional details to be considered through a negotiation process. But ultimately, it's to get to an end product where, you know, the community can then have that input. And we've been going through a public format for quite a while now, talking about this project. And, you know, at some point, the council has to make the decision that they're committed to the concept and to the project. And the next step then is the design process. And that's where the community comes in to look at aesthetics and, you know, you know, what, what, what they like to see in the project or colors or layouts, improvements in that arena. But it's really up to the council to make the commitment to the, the project one way or another. They've been going through this for years as we've been talking about the ozone, really envisioning what the Powers Creek district will ultimately could look like and what are the needs of the community and how that district can actually facilitate those needs. And that's why we're at this point now. So we've, they've done the visioning, they've done the scoping, they've done the zoning. And now there's an actual project for consideration. So right now, it's to get to the point where the council says, yes, we're committed to a project of this scope and of this nature. And then you start to whittle the details through the design process. So at some point, like I said, it's, it's really on the council to make those tough decisions on whether to go forward or not.
And we recently had a presentation from Cash, Sudo and Danco on some preliminary conceptual ideas, basically, to kind of give an idea of what they're, they're looking at. So until we have something more concrete, you know, and again, I've said this probably a bazillion times before, until we have something more concrete to share, then, you know, we can't create that public forum to sit and have this discussion without something in front of us to talk about. So again, we're going through these preliminary steps to get to that next point of having a design that we can best present to the public and have that discussion. And of course, the ozone is what's going to dictate those limitations on the design. But having that public feedback on, on a draft design is where we're headed.
Yeah, I understand that. I think that sometimes the way this has been articulated or shared. And again, if you're writing grants or soliciting money from certain, and there's money out there and you're going for it, there's going to be an expectation by the grantor that certain things get done. And I don't know if that includes a design that's going into these grant proposals or not. So that's why I'm asking these questions, you know, isn't it to put the cart before the horse in terms of, but if the grants are asking for specifics, that you're going to come up with design later, that doesn't make much sense. So that's why I'm asking this question. And I also would ask about, CEQA still hasn't been done as well on the project, so.
Lisa, so you're putting the cart before the horse. Let's, let's step back a moment. Let's, let's reiterate the timeline. So we're going through these initial negotiation agreements first. In, in the process, we've already seen a draft preliminary presentation by Danco, which was presented to the public. And the next step is to continue with the negotiations and developing a design for public review. And after that, and as we move along, then we'll start applying for grants. We're not doing that right now. That's, that's a step later after we have designs that we can then present. And so we're not at that point yet. So that, there is a sequential kind of progress to this. And, yeah, we need to have a solid plan in place before we seek grant funding. That's, that's the typical, what you would do. You have a plan in place, you go after grant funding with this plan and make it a convincing one in order to get grant funding. So we're not there yet. We're still working on it.
But I think it's importantly set to know that we're not, we're not at, at A right now. We're like, we're pretty far in the process. The council's made a fairly large commitment through this process that they're committed to, to a project. They're committed to, and not necessarily that it will, it's going to manifest, but they've made at least this initial commitment that this is the type of project that they're looking to see happen. And that has been, that commitment has manifested over a number of years of going through the, you know, the scoping, the public meetings, the zoning. And, you know, we're now at a point where it's like, this is a project that you, the council had hoped to get to. It's not fully vetted yet, but we're past the point of, do we want development in the Powers Creek district? Like, but, you know.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, okay, yeah, that's, I understand there is development of interest in Power Creek District. And I do see that, Mandy, but, but thanks for clarifying the cart, horse, horse, cart reverse about. Maybe I am thinking that the things are, you know, all of a sudden, there's going to be this thing built there and, and you have all the design and everything. So I guess it was just a little bit confusing, the delivery. I understand the commitment of the council to some development there in the ozone and all that kind of thing. I think it was the more of, the, the next stage is, it sounds like there's opportunity for public input on that as, as well. So I think one of the council people, I can't see who it was, actually answered that question to my, you know, to my satisfaction. Thank you. That was probably summer. Thank you, Lisa, for your interest. I see another hand raised. Julie Christie?
Hi, Adeline. Thanks, you guys, for continuing with this project and attempting to get public input. I'm still feeling like there is going to be, I know, Mandy, with her verbiage, just prior, said that this is a, a project and process. It's already surpassed the prior, said that this is a, a project in process. It's already surpassed the decision on whether this project is going to go forward or not. But I still feel like the council is going to receive a significant amount of rebuttal from the majority of our community on this project. I chimed in in the beginning. I've been following, I've been very quiet. And because you also commented that this is not a sealed deal, I still want to go back to my original statement, which was the value of that open space. You know, there's already been arrangements with the city this year to host the medieval festival, which used to be prior at our ranch, and that the parking is going to be in the open area. And I think you guys should really like, you know, I understand you've got your mandates with the, the grants and loan come. I understand those, those details. But at the same time, with that parcel, I mean, it, it's really deterring from any overflow traffic that the city's going to incur for, you know, hosting these events that actually, at the end of the day, you guys are always promoting with community events and trails and whatnots. So again, that open space, once you lose it, you know, get it back. And I think it's a, kind of a big mistake for the city to, to get rid of that property. I understand all the fallacies involved with it, but I also, just as a community member, still just really hate to see that go. And I also have my brother here with me and if it's okay with the council, he has different commentary, but he's been listening in with us and he'd like to, to talk to you guys as well, since this is the first, any, any information he's actually received on, on the subject. And if that's okay with the council, I'd like to let him speak as well.
Okay. I think we need to, it needs to be a, a three minute limit on this. Could I have someone?
Did I say three minutes? I was watching my.
No, you didn't.
Okay, I didn't think so. Okay, well, that's fine. As long as that's fine. I don't think you have any other hands raised.
Not at the moment. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Adeline.
It's Adeline. You're welcome. Well, whatever.
Hi, Adeline. My name's Albert Christie. I went through environmental science and I went through all the laws and regulations for things like this. And I'm just wondering, where can I find the environmental survey? And when is the public forum going to be? Because you guys just can't post things online and use COVID as an excuse to fast track a project. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Al. I just want to make sure everybody understands that this has not been fast tracked. This has gone through the planning commission with the opportunity zone. This has come to the city council. There is a lot of reasons, there are a lot of reasons why we're promoting this idea, why we're going to develop this property. First of all, it was a business park, an industrial park at first, then a business park. So the desire for businesses in Blue Lake is, is the reason why we have this park in the first place. A lot of people have looked at it now and said, oh, it's open space. There's a trail. You know, the idea has, has come about because it's been empty for so long. We're going to lose Blue Lake power in about four and a half years. That's a substantial amount of money that's going to be taken out of the coffers. They are, their lease will be up and I for one, as long as I'm on the council, will not want to extend it. So, but we are looking at some revenue loss there. We're also getting a lot of mandates from the state, even though we're a small.
I think his question was about the environmental study.
Oh, well, that's the, that's the CEQA process. Mandy already addressed that. That's going to be down the line. Is that what, isn't that what you said, Mandy?
Well, you need to do that before you do the public input so they can watch the environment, look at the environmental survey and rebuttal.
So the CEQA process will, is part of the project and we're not at that point yet because we don't actually have a project. So as soon as we get to that point, CEQA will kick in and all of those studies will be completed. And there will be plenty of opportunity for people to provide comments. CEQA always provides opportunities for public input. It's publicly noticed and published and presented. So you'll have opportunities to look at those studies and look at those determinations. At this point, we don't have a project scope. We're still in the process of looking at a design development agreement. So at the point where we get past the DDA process, you know, CEQA will, will start based upon a prescribed scope of the project. So we're just not there yet.
Okay, thank you, guys. I guess I was misinterpreting the fast track verbiage earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Are there any other questions or comments from the public?
No, we have a council member that has a comment though.
Okay, go ahead.
Talked about having a webpage for the Powers Creek project in the district and maybe we could get a timeline up there, just kind of where we're at and what the next steps are going to be.
Yeah, so Summer has actually put a page on our website and now it's just, we need to populate it with all the documents. So, so that, we are working on that, that the actual page itself is there. It's just a matter of now uploading all the documentation to that site. So I've got to kind of extrapolate that data from all the different locations to, to put there. But yeah, hopefully soon we'll have that available also. And if, if anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to, you know, go over if someone wants to come in or send me an email or give me a call. This isn't a secret project by any means. There's, there's nothing covert or fast tracked. But we are moving forward, you know, it's, we've been working on this for a long time and so things are, are progressing. We're not fast tracking anything or doing anything behind the scenes, sneaky in any way, but it is moving forward. There's a lot of moving parts that have to be coordinated. But I'm happy to go over the project or answer any questions at any time. And we've put that offer out there, you know, to the community at every council meeting, on Facebook, you know, so.
Although, you know, as far as, as far as government goes, I, I'd have to say, this is my fifth year on the council. This is like, I've, I've been working on it for five years. So this is moving pretty quick.
Yeah, we've, we've been talking about this a long time. And I too have been, I'm available on email or phone calls and people have called me and, and they have also emailed me and I try to respond as quickly as I can to all of that. So we're public servants. That's what being on a city council is all about. Lynn, I, I see your hand is up again. Did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, so CEQA is a California environmental quality act. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So is that going to happen before or after the council commits to negotiation, to a good faith negotiation on the project?
So we're committing to negotiations tonight, right? And the CEQA happens after a project has been developed, which we're still working on. And so once you have a project, then you can analyze it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you all for joining us on Zoom here. We do need some direction to staff as appropriate. We have filled in a few of the blanks. I'm assuming the first blank dated as of this, that would be tonight's date, the 24th of August, 2021. Is that correct, Russ?
Ah, yes, that'd be, that'd be correct.
Okay, so that's the first one.
We can date it whenever, but, yeah, but.
Or whenever it's signed, I get, I, I don't know. Okay.
Tonight is fine. We'll date it today on approval and then.
Okay, upon approval.
And require it returned.
So we need a, a motion from the council to direct staff to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement with Danco Communities, a California corporation.
So moved by Summer Doherty.
I will second.
Okay, moved by Summer Doherty, seconded by Benjamin McCree to enter.
Adeline, that was seconded by Chris Curran.
That was, yeah, correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I saw Benjamin was unmuted and so I thought it was his voice. Sorry, Chris. Okay. Motion made by Summer Doherty, seconded by Chris Curran, to enter into a, an exclusive negotiating agreement with Danco Communities and the City of Blue Lake. Is there any further discussion from council? Is there any further discussion from public? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to council for a roll call vote. April Sousa.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hogan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCree?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, we are now on item seven. Blue Lake Garbage LLC contract. Consider approving amended and restated contract for collection and transportation of solid waste with Blue Lake Garbage LLC, successor to Blue Lake Garbage Company. And there has been a change of our ownership. Blue Lake Garbage has been purchased by Humboldt Sanitation. They have formed a new subsidiary named Blue Lake Garbage LLC. Blue Lake Garbage LLC has proposed in coordination with city staff, the attached agreement to continue solid waste services in the City of Blue Lake. City staff has reviewed the proposed contract with Blue Lake Garbage LLC and is presenting the draft contract for council's review and consideration of acceptance. And we all have the draft contract that was in our packets and available to public upon request. Mandy, did you want to give any further input on this item?
Yeah, so Ryan was able to negotiate with Blue Lake Garbage, I believe Tasha's on the phone here, regarding the agreement date. I think we've come up with an agreement date that is beneficial to all parties. And that was based upon your last conversation at your last council meeting. And there, we did receive today kind of a cleaned up copy of this. At the time of putting the package together, we still had a copy that had some little comments and polls and stuff. So that's all been finalized and revised. So I have, I do have a clean copy of this now. But I believe that all of the concerns were addressed and, and Ryan is recommending council consider entering this contract with Blue Lake Garbage LLC.
Thank you, Mandy. There is, on our screen, the, one of the owners, the owners are also with us if there's any questions for them. Are there any questions or comments from council, first of all, on this issue?
I just wanted to say, thanks for working through that with our attorney and that, glad that we're able to come to an agreement on the, the term. And excited to see that you're looking, you know, you're going towards the automated collection. But yeah, really appreciate you guys sticking with us.
Thank you. Is there any other comment from council? Seeing none, is there any comment from the public on this item? Okay, back to council. The recommended action is to either authorize the mayor or the city manager to execute the final contract. I have no problem with the manager doing that, if that's the pleasure of the council. But we do need a motion so that we can enter into this agreement.
I motion to approve the contract. I'll second.
Okay, the motion should say you're authorizing the mayor or the city manager to execute the final contract.
Summer Doherty motions to authorize the mayor or city manager to sign the contract with Blue Lake.
Thank you, Summer. Thank you.
And I second.
All right. Motion made by Summer Doherty, seconded by Elaine Hogan to authorize the mayor or the city manager to execute the final contract with Blue Lake Garbage LLC. And if, is there any further discussion from council? Any discussion from anyone in the audience? Lynn, Glenn, yes?
I just had two questions. So the garbage rates will go up 10%. Is that right with this new contract? And then the second question is, what is, what does automated collection mean? I mean, how different is that going to be for us?
Thank you for your questions. I think it's 9%, isn't it? But Mandy, maybe it is 10. What, what is the, what is the percentage?
9.94. So yeah, 10%.
Okay. And did, did Mrs. Eisner want to answer the question about the automation? Or does someone have an answer to that?
I can answer that. Yeah. Automated collection is just when you have a cart at your residence and you see the garbage truck with the, the big arm that comes out and picks up that cart and dumps it. So it's automated by the truck rather than the way it's currently done by someone manually emptying that garbage can.
So for the public, then we'll have to get new garbage cans, right? And then we'll have to have them in a different place? Or is it, that all the same?
We will be providing those carts for the residents that sign up for service. So you'll, you'll get those from us.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your question, Lynn. Okay, we were at the point where we had a motion and a second. And is there any further discussion from public? Okay, roll call vote. April Sousa.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hogan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCree?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we are now on item eight. Healthcare for All California. We're going to review and consider healthcare for all California resolution in support of a single payer, single payer bills for healthcare reform. There'll be action and direction from council. The Humboldt County Chapter of Healthcare for All California has provided a resolution in support of the single payer bills for healthcare reform for council's consideration. The resolution asks for the city's support of the following bills. Calcare AB 1400, Medicare for All, and HR 1976. And we have a draft resolution and background material that was added. And we did have a person from this group that came to our last meeting, Catherine Donahue, and she presented this during our public session. And we asked that some information be given to us and that'd be put as an agenda item. So that's what is happening.
She is here. So she's actually right here. I'm here to answer any questions or clarify what is on this resolution and why do you, why are we asking for it from the city council? I would think that would be a question the city council would want to know. Why the heck are we here? This isn't city business particularly. The council, how this will affect Blue Lake will be if this should pass, you won't have to be paying for your employees' healthcare premiums any longer. So it will save the city quite a bit of money. But what I'd like to say is that right now, there's 3.2 million Californians who have no health insurance at all. And over a third of Californians report delaying or skipping necessary care due to cost. Now, the US medical debt is now at $140 billion. And over half of bankruptcies in this country are for healthcare bills. So what will this Calcare bill do if 1400 is enacted here in California? Is it will be universal coverage for all Californians as a human right, a single public program that would pay for all necessary and appropriate care for California residents, comprehensive benefits including medical, dental, vision, reproductive care, long-term care and more, freedom to choose your doctor and hospital of your choice with no narrow networks restricting what provider you can see. Care is free at the point of service. There are no copays, deductibles or prior authorization, a just transition for workers who may be displaced or otherwise affected by the switch to Calcare, such as insurance company workers, and care based on patient need with no financial incentive to delay or deny care, provided based on professional judgment of your care provider, not corporate boardrooms. So this is what will go, come to pass. We have a commission right now that the governor has set up and it's meeting actually tomorrow. It's got a couple of more meetings and it, they are, they are tasked with figuring out how do you pay for this? How can this happen? And the report from that will go to the governor. The reason we're doing this and asking for these resolutions is because there are a lot of people still, our, our elected officials in Sacramento that aren't behind this particular. our, our elected officials in Sacramento, that aren't behind this particular bill, AB 1400. And we're working to help convince them that this is an important thing to get behind and figure out how to do it. There's quite a few that still are not, including our own AD2 Assemblyperson, who is the head of the Healthcare Committee. And it's up to him to decide whether this bill will even be heard. So we are hoping that with local government elected officials saying, this is an important thing for everybody and for all of our cities and county areas. We're hoping that this will provide some little pushback that, yes, we do want this as a collective group of people here in California. And please figure out how to do it and please move this forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Catherine. I didn't realize you were there. That's great. Thank you. Are there any questions from council about this issue? This is just a letter of support, as I understand it, that will go to the necessary.
It will go to the commission and our assembly member.
No, it's actually a resolution, Adeline.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Yeah, resolution, right. In support of single payer bills. Thank you for the clarification. Any questions or comments from council on this item?
I love the idea. Can't wait to hear how they can determine how to fund it, right? How are we going to do this?
Correct. Well, there are two components to that, that, so there's the component of the money we already get from the federal government, which we need waivers to get from the federal government in order to have that money sent to the Calcare. It'll be a separate entity that, where the money goes. And I believe the governor is applying for those waivers. In the ACA, Healthcare for All, what we have now, there is a designation in there that states that the federal government can give those waivers if what you're making up is better or equal to what is what we have now. So the bill is better and equal to what we have now. And so there shouldn't be any reason why we can't get those waivers. Maybe with the last administration, we wouldn't have gotten them, but we should be able to get them now. And then the other part of that is, everybody's insurance will go away. So you will have no insurance premiums. You will have no copays. You will have no deductibles. You will have none of that. That will be gone. There may be, there will be an increase in taxes. But the offset by what you pay now and what that small increase in taxes would be, and I don't know the numbers because they're still working on it, would be significantly lower. There have been hundreds of, I don't know how many, but there's been lots of studies done that show it would be less expensive to do it this way than to have to pay your premiums. And then when you go to the doctor, your health cares. And then if you want need care, what is your deductible? And it's very high for a lot of people. Hence the bankruptcies. So it is doable. Every other developed country in the world has this but us. And our healthcare system is broken. It's terrible. And people don't get the care they need. They don't go to the doctor and people are dying because of it. And the pandemic has brought that all forward. I mean, it's like, it's like, for sure. It's like, we're in big trouble with our healthcare system.
What if some of the ways that other countries fund healthcare?
They fund it with taxes. And also, it's not just taxes on individuals. It's employer taxes. Employers will also save money. So it's the same. Like Blue Lake pays a lot of money for their health insurance premiums for their employees. If Blue Lake had to pay a small tax on healthcare to the Calcare fund, it would be much less than what you're paying for all the people that work for the city of Blue Lake. So it, there's lots of studies that can be looked up online. I think what I gave you last time I was here was all of these, these places that you could go and look up. It's, there'll be links to the different studies. The University of Massachusetts of Amherst did an excellent study on the, trying to compare the different ways to do it. There's not just one way to do it. There's a lot of ways to do it. And, but we can't even get past hearing it in our, in our state assembly because it's being blocked. So we need to push to just, let's figure it out. It's not impossible. Taiwan did it. If Taiwan can do it, why can't we do it? And this country, California, is the fifth biggest economy in the world.
And pardon me, I can't keep track of all that, like, which assemblyman? So are you referring to Jim Wood?
Yes, Jim Wood. Yes, he's the chair of the Health Committee. And last year, he didn't allow it to be heard. So it went on the shelf, just like SB 562 did three years ago. It went on the shelf and it never was heard again. So, and so it's a two-year bill. And when it comes back next year, when, in January, when they have a new session, we want him to at least have, let his committee hear it, hear the bill, just put it forth. Whether the committee will approve it or not, I don't, you know, who knows? But there's still a lot of different areas in the state that their, their elected official is not behind this bill. So we're hoping that by getting resolutions, that that will let our people we voted for know that this is something that they need to work on. And it's, it's just, it can be worked on and it can happen if we have the will. I had a political person tell me quite some years ago when I was lobbying in Washington that there's, this isn't politically viable. This, 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 to do this is not politically viable. All that means is nobody will vote for it that has been elected. But they get a lot of money from the health. I mean, you follow the money and see where their donors are and who's paying them to be in office, supporting their, their running for office, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine, for that. Catherine is a retired nurse, aren't you, Catherine? So you've had a lot.
I'm retired at this point, but I'm very active in the California Alliance for Retired Americans and Healthcare for All groups. And I'm also a member of the Central. So a lot of the, all the unions here in this county are supportive of this. Some unions aren't, like in the LA area, there's the state feds, it's not, isn't supportive as this area is. This is a very progressive area here in Humboldt County. I mean, there's people, there's pockets of not progressiveness. But Humboldt County as a whole is what they want. We want issues that fix the common good here, be it the environment, be whatever it is. That's basically Humboldt County. That's why I like living here.
And these resolutions are going around to other cities all over the state of California, I assume, and particularly in our area because Jim Wood is our representative. Is that not correct?
That's correct. Yes, for the last one, SB 562, there were eight city councils and community service districts that passed resolutions, including Blue Lake, for that bill that died. So it's, it's a, it's a tool to use to, to let our elected officials know that we, as a citizen of this state, we would like to have this. And the great majority of people do.
Thank you. Did you have any questions from council persons? Okay. This is in the form of a resolution that would be signed. There's even spots for each city council member, as well as the mayor. It's a resolution in support of single payer bills for healthcare reform. I won't go through the whole resolution, but as all resolutions, there's the, the several whereas, 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 and then the resolution at the end. Be it now resolved, the city of Blue Lake expresses its enthusiastic support for the bills, Calcare AB 1400 and Medicare for All, HR 1976. And you can look those up as well to find out more information about them. And calls upon our state and federal legislators to work toward their immediate enactment. Is there a motion from the council to pass this resolution?
I know we approved the resolution.
So Elaine Hogan motions, seconded by Summer Doherty, to pass a resolution in support of single payer bills for healthcare reform. Is there any further discussion from council? Discussion from public? Back to council for a roll call vote?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hogan?
Yeah.
Councilmember McCree?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes. It passes. Thank you. And thanks, Catherine, for coming.
I live in the Glendale area, so I'm like, I'm not in the city. I only made two of these. But this is a council, you've got some information on your two.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to item nine. Parks and Recreation Hiring Committee Designation. Designate up to two council representatives to serve on the Blue Lake Parks and Recreation Director Position Hiring Committee. I just want to inform people that the reason why we can only appoint two people to, say, the negotiating committee earlier and to this committee is as soon as you hit three council persons, then you get into the Brown Act and this becomes an issue that has to be a public meeting. So if you have two council persons, you can then have a committee and you don't have to go by the Brown Act, meaning that a lot can get done. And then it can, and then it does go to the full council afterwards for the complete vote. But that's why we're always appointing two of everything rather than three or more. If that's, if that clarified anything, or maybe it made it muddier. I don't know. Anyway, we are in the position now of needing a park and rec director. Maybe some of you have seen the sign on the post office. The city has received several qualified applications for the position of Parks and Recreation Director. Council has expressed interest in participating in the interview process and must formally designate one or two members to serve on the committee. Is there anyone that's interested in this?
I'm interested. Yeah.
I also want to make sure you guys have the time to commit because we're, you know, we probably have nine applications to go through. So trying, it literally could take a day or two days to get through them. So if anyone has any issues of being able to facilitate that, just keep that in mind. They do take a little while. And this process, in the past, we, and I really liked it, the last time we did it, we actually gave them the questions ahead of time and asked them to be more interactive with the commission where, you know, we asked them to do certain things and they come up with certain ideas and presentations so that we could really see kind of how they thought and they researched and they pulled things together versus just kind of this dry, you know, sell it to the busters. So it does, it is a little bit more involved and interactive. It can take a little bit longer, but I think we get more out of it.
What's the timeline that you're thinking when you start the interview?
Well, I was hoping to get some done this week, on Friday. I know it's really quick, but we're, we can push it to next week too, which is fine.
I will be out of town Friday.
Okay, so we can push if that's. I don't know who you guys are going to choose, but.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
Probably don't have the time. Yeah.
I, I have the time and I am very interested in being on the committee as well. So I, and the other thing is, one time we did do them on a Saturday, which helped some people who have jobs that are on the council. But that's just a thought, you know?
Probably could, we probably could do that. Because I am having a little bit of conflict with a couple of people that need to interview, also are working at camps and they're, you know, some of them are starting at the school and, you know, so we are having some issues, so.
Would it be in person or would it be by Zoom?
Oh, yeah.
I think it's whatever your comfort level is. You know, I think with parks and rec, you almost get facilitated outside. That works for people also.
Okay, that's a nice idea.
I want to ask you, Adeline, since you're already on the negotiating committee, is it fair to allow a different council member for the interview committee?
It's, it's fine with me. I, if you have the time, I'm just saying, I do have the time because I'm retired. And I know a lot of you have work schedules. But I'm happy to step down and not be on this if, if you two would like to do it.
I was just, because we haven't given Ben much of an opportunity here to jump in.
Yeah, no, I have the time. I, I'm interested. I think it would be a, a good opportunity. But if there are people who are more interested than me, please feel free to go ahead.
All right. There you go. I second that nomination.
Okay, so, so who, who are we choosing here? I'm confused.
Ben and Summer.
Ben and Summer. Okay, so there's a motion to appoint Ben McCree and Summer Doherty to the interview committee. Who made that motion?
Chris.
Chris Curran, okay. All right.
I seconded.
Okay. Motion by Chris Curran, seconded by Elaine Hogan, to appoint Ben McCree and Summer Doherty to the interview committee for our Parks and Rec Director.
Okay, so next week? Yeah, go ahead.
You guys are going to have to work that out.
And maybe get a few of them in. We might have to spread them out too. Or it would be nice to kind of like get through a big swab of them if we can. So, but I'll, I'll touch base with you guys and we'll throw all of that out.
All right, as it is, I have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion from council on this motion? Is there anyone from public that would like to weigh in on this? Back to council for the vote. Roll call, please, April Sousa on the motion.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hogan?
Yeah.
Councilmember McCree?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes. Okay, we have a committee for the interview. Very good. All right, we are moving right along nicely at eight o'clock here. And we are on item 10, Council Correspondence. 10A is the Humboldt Deputy Sheriff's Organization. 10B is the California League of Cities Resolution Packet. Let's go with 10A. We have a lot of information on this in our packet from Deputy Barney and a lot of other vital information concerning this issue. So there's a letter from the Humboldt Deputy Sheriff's Organization. And then there's the League of Cities Annual Meeting Resolution Packet. Okay, the letter from Humboldt Deputy Sheriff's Organization. It looks like what they're asking, if I'm, if I can kind of clarify it, is they're asking for Measure Z funds to be used in a more open-handed way as far as going towards, I believe, salary. Because at this point, the sheriff's department is short-staffed. Is that, is that my understanding of the problem, Mandy?
I believe that is their assessment of the problem.
Well, and they're also, they're noting that the, the funds are, the Measure Z funds aren't necessarily being utilized appropriately per the mission, basically, this county set forth. So, and there's just not the capability of the sheriff's department to staff all of these positions.
And I, I, I've sat on the Measure Z, through the Measure Z process for a number of years. And it's been my understanding, and I could be wrong, but I feel fairly confident that the sheriff's positions are fully funded. It's not a lack of funding, it's a lack of people being interested in going into law enforcement. And I don't think, it's not a problem that's just here. It's across the nation.
Right.
There's just a shortage of people willing to go into this arena. And I honestly feel, and this is just my personal opinion, I do feel strongly about reallocating resources amongst law enforcement to, you know, to address mental health issues and addiction and things. Because I feel that our law enforcement personnel are put in situations that they're not necessarily qualified to be in. And that creates a problem for them. It creates a problem for their employment status and just their safety in general. But I believe it's a, I feel like it's a much larger issue than just what is being presented in, in this letter. But it's up to the council, obviously, to direct staff to take any action or to further vet the issue or ask for clarification or more information.
I think you pretty well spell that with, yeah, the issues. And I hear you on that. We have a serious shortage in. We have a serious shortage in helping to work positively with people on mental health issues. So, but, I mean, what can we do? We know that we aren't giving our full coverage that what we're paying for and he acknowledges that, that here.
Yeah.
And, I mean, there's not much we can do if they don't have the staff to do it.
Yeah, and like I said, I, I don't, what I've heard isn't necessarily that it's a, a salary issue.
No, no.
You can't throw money at an issue.
Yeah.
You know, they looked at, I know over the years, there's been competing bonuses. I mean, I've actually been on meetings where it was like, you know, one jurisdiction saying, well, we just voted to do a $10,000 signing bonus. And the other jurisdiction's like, oh my God, we're only offering five. We're going to have to go back to council and see if we can get 12. You know, I mean, literally people trying to steal from each other because there's just not another pool out there to pull from. So I, I don't know, like, but I honestly feel like it's not necessarily just a money issue.
No.
And fully staffed and fully funded for a number of years, the money has been there, it's just the people haven't. And we've had that when we've been out and needed Measure Z funding to pay for even a half-time deputy. There were several years where we didn't get the half-time deputy because there just was no one there. And we carried over that funding over and over multiple years to the point where when they did have someone, then we were able to bring that position on. But the money was there, it's just the bodies weren't. So I, I think if, I would recommend that the council look further into this issue before lending support to this, because like I said, I think it's a deeper issue.
Well, that, I mean, this goes back to our own contract with the sheriff's department. And do we, I mean, we haven't, it hasn't been brought back yet because there's some hangups on the other end, but.
We're just staffing shortage.
Right, so we wouldn't be signing anything, so therefore we wouldn't be paying out anything because there's not a person to pay.
Yeah.
To, to take that position.
And I think that the ask is just that we, you know, we push for more money to go to law enforcement from Measure Z. And Measure Z is very, it's a, it's a hard process. It's probably the most.
Oh yeah, that's a tough one to apply for and get.
Yeah, I mean, you literally go there and fight amongst yourselves. For, it's very literally.
Amongst your neighbors.
It's a horrible process. And, you know, you're fighting against, you know, everyone's got a need and everyone's asking for money.
Yeah.
And then you're trying to justify why your need is better than their need. And it really gets to, it really gets ugly really quickly.
And it's like a broken record. I remember a couple of years ago, Jason Cruz and I actually went and spoke in front of the Measure Z, in, you know, in support of Blue Lake and trying to get us that additional funding. And it was like, yeah, I'm like, well, I'm saying the same thing that my neighbors are saying. We all need the same thing and.
Yeah, and it, it's too bad we're not taking more of a holistic approach to, you know, I mean, we do have this pot of money and it's, you know, the resource to, to have a better process, I think to address the overall need with that money is just not there and it needs to be completely reworked. But I feel like the sheriff's, there's been a lot of funding put in that direction, but like I said, it's just that the bodies just aren't there to fill the slot. And I don't know that they would be there if you offered them more money either.
No.
We just don't think we're reducing some law enforcement. And it's part of the climate of law enforcement these days, you know, as a nationwide parent.
Yeah, it's a complicated issue and I know CR has a good police academy and even they, I believe from what I've heard, are really down on the numbers of people that are enrolled in their academy there. I'm, I'm wondering if money would help to incentivize people to go into the profession, but, you know, I don't have any easy answers for this either. I, I'm concerned, you know, I've already had at least one phone call from a concerned citizen about what's happening in Blue Lake and, and we do have a contract that's up and we need to look at renegotiating that. But then again, there's not the personnel, so it's, I feel like we're just really going around and around on this issue. What is the pleasure of the council on this? Would you like more information? Would you like someone to come in and speak to us about this a little more? I, I'm, I'm at a loss at this point. I mean, we could have Sheriff Hansel come in and talk to us. He hasn't visited us in a while, but there's that possible.
Sheriff Hansel, not Hansel, but Deputy Miller talked about it at the Public Safety Commission. I think it's pretty well-known what's going on, but considering it's a council correspondence, there's no action. This is just informational only.
Right, right. Yeah. Okay, well, I appreciate the input and it is a concern and it's happening all over. I mean, it's not just Blue Lake that's experiencing theft and petty crime. It's, it's happening all over. All right, if there's no action on item 10A, then we'll go on to 10B, California League of Cities Resolution Packet.
Yeah, so this packet came in from the league and it came in a little late, so I haven't had a chance to go through all of it. But I wanted to get it to you guys because I'm not sure who will be representing the city. If you're still.
It is, but, well, didn't they just have a meeting, Adeline? Did you go with the?
Yeah, I was going to report, I was going to report on it because I did attend the meeting via Zoom and we had a very good presentation about all the laws coming up that we're interested in whether the league is endorsing them or not. So I believe this was one of, one of the issues that came up at that meeting.
So can we talk a little bit about it in your, your report of council then?
Well, we could.
So these are the resolutions that'll be presented at the annual conference.
Right, okay.
So give council a little bit of time to, but it's not a lot of time.
Right. So, and I haven't signed up for the annual, yeah, I haven't signed up for the annual conference yet, so, okay.
Can, can you make the September meeting? I guess it'll be via Zoom, that's going to be in Sacramento on the 21st. Elaine?
It's, it's over Zoom though, right? I mean, not going to Sacramento, but.
Right, right. That's what I'm assuming, that's what I'm assuming from what I, I saw here that the next, it says Annual Conference Resolutions Packet, 2021 Annual Conference Resolution, September 22nd to 24th, 2021.
Yeah, I can probably make some meetings, I mean, not all three days, but I could probably go to the General Assembly. I'll, I'll have to look and I'll let you know if I need you to be the alternate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. All right.
They're fun, but.
So, no action on item 10B then? And we'll discuss it more for the next meeting.
Well, these would be supporting resolutions that'll be brought up at the annual conference, whether Blue Lake wants to vote in support of these resolutions.
Right, and I took notes at the last meeting. They went through each resolution and then they told whether they were supporting them or not and then the reason why they weren't. So I, I took some copious notes because I, I don't, I don't usually go to their meetings and, and I was really sad that it wasn't going to be in person because of the COVID, it had to be changed because it was supposed to be in Eureka and there was supposed to be a nice dinner. And also, we were going to be at Sequoia Park Zoo to do the, the redwood walk above the redwoods and that, of course, didn't happen either. But anyway, I did, I did attend the meeting via Zoom and take minutes and take notes. Okay, yeah.
Issue is the sales tax issue. And that's something that's really hitting a lot of jurisdictions and it's something that can be really beneficial for the city of Blue Lake, you know, to have, to make sure that those sales taxes are allocated at the point of delivery because we, you know, versus at the point of distribution from these fulfillment centers. So with, with so many people shopping online, we're seeing, you know, we don't have a lot of sales tax anyways, so it could be a real benefit to us to even have a small allocation of that receipt. So we do have a lot of, I know just at City Hall, we have a lot of online shop. If we were able to generate that one percent to the location of delivery, it could be, you know, a boost to our revenue stream. That one, that one is, I think, very interesting and could be very beneficial to the great.
Do you remember what number that was? Oh, SB, is it SB 555, the short-term rental tax?
No, this is the tax initiative for online sales.
Oh, okay. Oh, I don't, I don't see that one in my notes. Okay.
Yeah, I skimmed through it. It looked really good. I mean, online sales tax has always been an issue from collecting it to distributing it. I think some redistribution would be fantastic.
Yeah. Well, that sounds good. That one's the railroad one I'm just reviewing now. I don't think it really applies to the city. And I'm a little more hesitant to vote yes on that one, just from my brief review here.
Yeah, and if you want to do a little bit of research, we could always set up a call with, with Sarah to talk through it and kind of see what the pros and cons are. Because I haven't had, I didn't have a chance to read through all of the resolutions and supporting documents, but the sales tax was the one that I really keyed in on because like I said, that's a revenue source that we're not really adequately capturing and it could be helpful to the city.
Definitely. Okay, and I think the league, so I think there's some sort of process or something that we can go through to establish with the process for how we declare support, like letters of support and stuff for these resolutions. Because all these cities that provided letters, I think that they have some sort of streamlined process to do that.
They do.
It's a way we can do that for the future.
And the, the league will sometimes send out, you know, these, you know, informational packets or, you know, opportunities for support. I haven't seen much come in lately.
Yeah.
I think that there's been a lot of like shifting and stuff taking place and then, you know, all these conferences were being planned and they're canceled. And so I know Sarah was having a little bit of a hard time with, you know, with all the faculty and keeping us all. But she's, she's really good at any time, like.
She is, yeah.
Answer questions quickly or find new resources. But I, I think things, because like I just got this one.
Right.
Last week, so.
Okay.
Coming right up on you in time for your guys' meeting if you want.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, and if Sarah had like a template or something that we could use when we want to be, when we want to weigh in on a particular bill, then, you know, that would be really helpful too, so that we wouldn't have to, you know, come up with the, you know, the wheel.
Those action items, yeah, I get a lot of action alerts. I just am not sure internally what our process is. Like, I'm the representative for the league and they send out these emergency action alerts, like get a, show your support, but I certainly can't add half an idea. And so it's, should I be putting those as agenda items or?
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, we get them too. We, we all get them. We all get them. Sarah's really good about that kind of thing. But I, I wondered about that too, what's the process of that? Because some of them looked good and if they do affect our city or that they would benefit Blue Lake, I think we do need to, to weigh in on them, you know. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, go ahead.
Some, so I, Sarah just sent something out saying like, please add us through your network person. So we're not spam, is the way it's coming in. So I know I sent, I sent that off to our IT people and I don't know if it's been addressed. So if there's anything, so this one came in the mail and normally I get the, the electronic version of that. And so we may be in that kind of like.
Okay.
Plaguing spam situation right now, so we get that figured out.
Okay.
Yeah, I wondered about that too, because I got it, I got it by mail as well and through the city. All right, I guess there's no action on 10B. We're on 11 Consent Agenda, Minutes of A and B. I'd like to pull item 11B because I have some concerns about the minutes on that. And what my, okay, go ahead.
I moved approval of the consent agenda minus B.
I'll second Summer.
Okay, motion by Chris Kuren, seconded by Summer Doherty to approve item 10A. Any further discussion? I'm sorry, 11A. I'm sorry, 11A. Oh, are, what, what was the, was the motion to pull 11B?
You pulled 11B and, and then Chris approved, or motion to approve 11A.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
And then Summers, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Clarification there. All right, so any further discussion on that motion from council? From public? Back to council for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Hogan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCree?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes. Okay, my concern about the minutes of July 27th is that when we adjourn to closed session, we never, there's nothing here that says that we open back up to open session. I don't know. This, this, I mean, it's.
So that's because I wasn't there. And so I sent these on to Mandy and I asked her to put in whatever you guys needed to have added. So I can't answer that question for you, but I can add what you need for that. Um, I just, I wasn't there because I was closed session, so I was out.
Right.
So, and then there also needs to be a report out. Typically, when it's at the end of a session, typically, people will put that at the beginning of the next council session. But if you did have a report out after your session, then there, there needs to be that as well.
Right, that was also my concern. Yeah, yeah.
So anyways, I can add that if I have that information, but I don't have that information, so.
So Mandy, do you have the information? Because we went into closed session at 8:27, I believe. And then.
I have that information and that is my, that is my oversight. I do have it right here.
Okay.
So I have.
Do you want to tell me right now and I will add it?
That would be great. So I have a motion to come out of closed session at 9:35. The motion was made by Summer, seconded by Elaine.
At nine, what, 45, 35?
9:30, oh, 9:35?
9:35, okay. And no reportable action?
So Summer made the motion to come out of closed session. Who seconded it?
Elaine. And then we had a motion to adjourn by Elaine and seconded by Ben. There was consensus, council consensus on that. I apologize, April.
That's okay, but I, I just want to clarify that there was no reportable action. Is that correct?
No reportable.
Okay. I will get those.
Okay, and then the last thing we need to, okay, so that was unanimous. And then what, what time did we adjourn?
Right after, so at 9:35, it's all happening at one.
All right. All right, so, point of order, can we pass these minutes tonight with those additions?
Yes, you can.
All right, so I would like a motion to pass the minutes of the July 27th meeting with those additions to the end of the meeting.
The move by Summer.
I'll second.
Okay, motion.
Sorry, was that McCree?
That's me.
Motion made by Summer Doherty, seconded by Ben McCree to approve the minutes of July 27th, 2021 with the addition. July 27th, 2021, with the additions at the end of the meeting noted. Any further discussion by council? Anything from public? Back to council for the vote.
Elaine Lynn has.
Okay.
Are you ready for vote?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay, councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Dwardy?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hogan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCreath?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes. It passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item 12, reports of council and staff. I'm going to go around the council as if we were all sitting together, which I hope we soon will be. So first Elaine Hogan, do you have anything to report?
No, nothing to report. HWMA doesn't meet in August.
Okay, moving around the imaginary table. Summer Dwardy, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, last night, the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission met and we had a fantastic presentation by President Johnson from HSU and, and folks that are working with him. And so I asked, I sent that on, that presentation on to Mandy so she could share it with all of you. But if anybody in the public is interested in seeing that presentation, so the Mad River Union was there and covered it, and the meeting was also recorded. So it's the RDEX August 23rd meeting, which will be posted eventually, and you can watch that presentation if you wanted to see it. But they're getting, you know, like $450 million and there's all sorts of, like, great progress moving forward to change HSU into a polytech institute and the different degrees that they're offering are focused, you know, not as focused on the liberal arts, but more focused on the engineering and, and whatnot. But a lot of excitement and momentum. And one of the concerns that was brought up was how this may impact our own housing elements and our, everybody, you know, all the cities have been planning around to accommodate for additional housing. But then this may bring on the need for additional student housing. And so how can, how do we need to change our planning to help accommodate for that as well? So they're, they're looking at kind of a rough estimate of, like a, so a 60-40 split from in-person to online, so 60 in-person, 40 online learning. And they may, like, I had asked, what's the maximum in-person student count? Would they, what's their target? And they said around 11,000. So it's, and it's a, that's a little bit more than their 8,000 that they have had. And they're also looking at other pieces of property to build on and do kind of a multi-use living lecture hall, study halls, food, you know, things like that in, in and near the campus. So it was, yeah, it was really going to bring, very exciting. It will definitely, it may boost our economy. It will do a lot of different things for our region. So it's something to look forward to. But that presentation, if you also want the PowerPoint that was shared, Mandy now has it. And then it can be viewed on the RDEX board meeting from August 23rd. And the Public Safety Commission, I only attended a portion of it because my aunt and uncle had to evacuate from the Junction City fire. So they had just gotten to my house that night when we had our Public Safety Commission, so I like stayed part of it. But Stephanie Dickinson, who's on the Public Safety Commission, is now starting to observe and report morning walks. And so she's been doing that and advocating it and trying to get people to join. And I think it's great to see her. She's like gung ho and spearheading that. And, and yeah, there's a, everybody's like, hey, what can we do? Like, why, you know, there's such an issue here. And she's like, here, let's do it. Let's go. So I'm glad to see her taking the lead on that. But, yeah, great.
Yeah, supposedly had, they had their first walk this morning, I think. Because it was supposed to be on Tuesday. So I don't know how it went. I was watching on, checking Facebook to see how it went. Okay, thank you, Summer, for your meeting reports. I have three reports that, to make. First of all, I did attend the League of Cities meeting via Zoom. It was August 13th, 2021, a Friday. And I, like I said, I, I wrote down some notes about some of the bills that are coming through, SB 619, organic waste reduction regulations, AB 361, open meetings, teleconferences, and that expires on September 30th. So the league is concerned about how we're going to extend that now that we have COVID maybe coming back on with the spike in cases. SB 9, housing development approvals allows two residential units. The league opposes this. AB 215, the housing element, if your housing element is lower than most, have to have a consultation. And the league also opposes that. They think it's, it's redundant as far as regulations go. And, let's see, I mean, I have, I have a, let's see, AB 5000, local planning coastal development. We already have HCD, so they oppose that. AB 989, new housing appeals committee, a position, they oppose that. They feel the courts are the best place to appeal decisions. SB 555, short-term rental tax opposes unless amended. We don't want state to take our TOT transit occupancy taxes. AB 14, broadband, that would help. So they, they were approval of that. SB 4, surcharge on our phones, sunsets in 2022, position, they support it. We need to send in letters of support for that. SB 556, streetlights, poles, traffic signals and utility poles, they oppose that. And then we met the new president, is Stacy Matina, Mayor Pro Tem of Lakeport. And what else happened? 200,000 N95 masks are available. Contact Susan. Did we get any of those, Mandy?
We did. So I went up a box. I think we have like 400 and something. So we're starting to hand those out to all the businesses. We got some over to our rec crew. I just dropped some off to Darcy at her business and we're slowly just getting, handing them out.
Great, great. Yeah, I, I think those things are wonderful. I had to spend, you know, probably about 12 hours wearing masks on my flight to Hawaii and then on my flight back. And I wore an N95. And it never fogs up the glasses. They're very comfortable. I, I think they're great. I mean, I have a lot of really cute, you know, cloth masks and this and that. But I really think those N95s are, are good. Okay, then the second meeting I attended was HCOG, which was just last Thursday. And we got a report on the 101 Eureka Arcade corridor. The bids are opened, opened on July 22nd for the project. There were three bids. They came in between 50 to 59 million dollars. The engineer's estimate had been 45 million. So they're going to have to repackage the project because it's come over, the bids have become, have come over. And then we approved several items that affected Blue Lake. One of them that affected us was the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021. The smaller cities are not getting that much. We're getting $3,408 from that fund. And that's about all we had. Yeah, can't see anything else. And then we had a closed session for the six-month performance evaluation of our, our new director, Beth Burks. And then the last thing I just want to report on is the citywide yard sale, which happened last Saturday. We had 27 people on the map. I was really nervous about having it because with the spikes in the coronavirus, I didn't want us to have a super spreader here. But I honestly think that it was all done outside. There was, it was a nice breezy day. I saw a lot of people wearing masks. And so I think it was success. And I don't think it was a, a safety concern. I think everybody was really happy to have it. And there are a lot of free items now. They're slowly disappearing. But I think it was overall a good event. And we did give $80 from the maps. The maps were free. It was $5 to get on the map. Somebody, a few people didn't understand that. They thought, they had to pay $5 for the map. The maps were free, but to get on it was $5. We handed $80 to the Humboldt, or to the Resource Center behind City Hall. And they were happy to receive that money. And then the other money went to copying and some to the boutique for taking, for her, her job of taking in the, the people that signed up. So that's all I have. Moving right along, let's see, who's next? Chris, would you be next, please?
I didn't have any meetings, but RCA will meet on Thursday.
Okay. And then Ben, did you have any meetings?
Nope, I've not seen the report.
Okay, thank you. Staff report, Mandy?
Yeah, so I'll just give a kind of a quick update on where we are on some of our projects. It's been a busy month. We have a lot of projects and a lot of work is being done. Gary and I have been spending a lot of time together working on the housing element and working with the planning commission, trying to move forward some of those initiatives. And I think we've, I think we've made some really good headway. And I think we've got, I think the planning commission is in a really good space right now as far as being proactive and kind of understanding the needs of the housing element, the state's requirements, and just how the city needs to be a player and be at the table rather than lose, kind of losing the Blue Lake flavor of our own housing element. So we've been working on some design standards and just some more of the, the more detailed type of information to include in a lot of the elements. Gary's been extrapolating a lot of information from Trinidad Housing Element because they recently had theirs updated and accepted. I think they have kind of like a conditional acceptance right now, but it seems like, you know, they went through a process, working with a consultant to work through all of these issues that the state really wanted. So it was like, why reinvent the wheel? Let's just kind of take what they have. And then we can present it and see if the planning commission wants to tweak it. But at least it gives us a good framework to work from so we can start taking things off quickly. We did just receive a $15,000 grant from UCA to buy additional kitchen equipment for our serving booths and a concession stand, which will really help to keep moving those forward as commercial facilities so that we can rent those out at kind of a longer term and higher price points. So that's kind of exciting. We're still waiting for word on the town square. We should know something in September. But we did just install the water bottle filling station, which I think looks really cute. And I'm kind of, it seems to me like, it's like begging for like Patricia Senate or something like painted. Or I keep thinking it looks like a person too, kind of like.
Too. It looks like a little robot or something. It's the cutest thing, but maybe it does need a face and some hands or something. I don't know. But it's really nice.
So it's just begging for something. So, but that's been fun. The dogs using it too. So decent, happy. Of course, we're working on the LRSP, which is what Mike presented on today. School starts on Monday. That's exciting. So we'll have kids circulating. So make sure everyone is kind of slowing down and being cognizant of, of having a bunch of littles trying to get to their, their space. And this will be their first kind of time back, you know, with hopefully somewhat of a normal type of rotation. They're going to be going full days. After school program is going to be operating. So, you know, just trying to make sure that they all can stay safe and get to their, their, their school safely. And the other project I just want to let council know is PG&E is going to be doing a gas line replacement project for the city. And they literally are going to be replacing all the gas lines in the city at one time. So it's going to be like a year-long process. It's going to be, they've never done a project where they did like a whole city at one time and just kept working at it till it was done. So it's a little bit of a learning curve. But they felt that since most of our infrastructure is all the same age, it all needs to be replaced. So they might as well just get into it. And so we're kind of working through some of the logistics. I don't know what the impacts are going to be. They'll do some directional drilling, but there will be some open trenching that has to take place. So we're going to be looking at that. And I believe that they're talking about starting in maybe in February. So as we get some more detail, we'll do some more community outreach. But ultimately, it's a very important project. No one wants leaking gas lines. I mean, we all know what happened with San Bruno. And we do have aging infrastructure here. So we want to encourage them to move forward with the project, but also do it in a way that presents the least amount of impact to the community. So we just got some preliminary plans today. We haven't had a chance to like look at them, but we're working with them on stormwater mapping and things so they can like see where all of our infrastructure. So the other side of it is we're going to get a lot of the data out of it too. So we're going to, you know, get all of that information into the GIS system so we can start building our, you know, mapping capacity for our infrastructure, which will be really good. So that's a big project. I don't know how much that's going to cost, but I can't imagine it's going to be cheap. But it will ultimately be good for the community to have safe gas infrastructure.
So that's like the ones even from the street all the way up to our houses?
I think right now they're looking at all the main lines. I don't know if they're going to be evaluating them. They'll probably evaluate the laterals based upon the time of construction. So looking at, you know, where the subdivisions were put in and individual houses. But right now, I think they're looking at mostly at the main lines, distribution lines. Yeah.
Can you, have you heard anything about the Powers Creek restoration project? I've heard nothing about it.
Yeah, so I actually just talked to Tim Brodmann this morning. He called. And things are still moving forward with that project. That's the restoration project that has flipped from Kepi's property towards the mouth of Powers Creek, is the city's property. And that's about a $600,000 project. I keep looking like, ooh, I couldn't see it.
Yeah, no.
Sorry. And I believe they're at the stage right now where they're developing their scope of work because they have to go out to bid. So Tim called to kind of bounce some ideas off me about the bidding process. And, you know, it just, it just is what it is. It just needs to go out to a competitive bid, which is what we said at the beginning.
When do we get to see the designs?
So the designs, I think, are like, I think NOAA said they're about 40% complete. I think MRA wants to say that they're closer to, you know, 70, 60.
How are they going to do this then?
Well, they'll go out to bid with the preliminary design. But, I mean, it's not going to change much. You know, the creek is pretty limited and the flow capacity is limited. So that really knocks down the footprint of your restoration activities as well. And then you're really bound by property lines and stuff. So I think mostly getting it through NOAA is kind of the next big step. And Margaret Cowherd's on that. So it's been, it's been tough. But I haven't had an update lately to see where they're at on that part of the project. But just trying to get it out to the bidding process is kind of what we're really pushing forward. So.
So as far as design, though, considering we're a landowner in this, can we see them?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. And they did do the, we had the design done two years ago with that green, like.
I remember that. I remember Margaret being completely opposed to it.
Yeah, so through the process, they've been making some of those changes and working with her on some of that. So those are.
I remember seeing an initial email, but have not seen a single thing since. And it's, considering it's on city property, I would expect that, that should come, we can see it before anything happens.
Absolutely. Yeah. And it's been one of our concerns as staff that, you know, like, it's, and it's been one of MRA's concerns also. I think they have some staff that are also holding it very tight. And that's been a little problematic. And there's also been a little bit of pushback of, originally, they felt that they didn't have to put this out to competitive bids.
But they do.
But absolutely, they do. There is another funding source that they're writing for that doesn't require it. As long as you write it into your project proposal and your grant, they consider that your bidding process. I don't understand in any way how that could be competitive because you're writing them in.
There are some grants that you can do that. But I, I guess my point is that they're planning on somebody else's property, the city, and they're not sharing the design with us. So I guess what I'm saying is maybe, do we need to?
Well, I think before it goes to the bidding process, that will be brought back because we're going to need to be able to sign off on that bid package, which will have those preliminary designs and everything as part of it.
Yeah.
Uh, we have signed off on somewhat through the last grant on some of those preliminary designs and everything and the constraints. And, you know, like I said, there's not a lot. It's, it's not an overly complicated project.
No, but I, the, the, and the point, my point is, is etiquette in working with landlords is that when you're planning on somebody else's property, you actually communicate with them. So I'm just saying that when you're designing on somebody else's property, you actually have to engage with them. And there's been no engagement really.
Yeah, it's been an interesting process. Um, and it was supposed to be, this was supposed to be building off of the, the last grant we had where we did accept, you know, those designs. And so this was to get to the next step where then you were doing the environmentals and, you know, going through the secret process and then going out to bid. So they've been working, you know, you know, backing into that design to get to, to the bid process. So, but we haven't seen a lot of movement on it. And I think there's been a lot of internal push and pull.
Right.
Uh, so they're dealing with at this point.
Which is, that's on them to deal with. But at this point, I think it's, it's time for them to present it back to the landowners. Um, yeah.
Yeah, we can ask them to do a presentation again.
That'd be great. Future agenda.
Uh, thank you, Mandy. Um, I just had one question I wanted to ask you about. Um, the fire, uh, of the Russo's property behind the post office. Have they determined what the cause was? And, you know, I, I haven't heard anything about it. I mean, it happened. It was on, uh, Facebook. I didn't see anything in the paper about it or anything. I mean, it's a, it's a fire. Um, and it looked pretty bad. Do, do you have any information that you could tell us, uh, about what happened there?
Yeah. Uh, I mean, it's, so I would say, so yes, I know, I know a lot about the fire. So I responded to that fire. It started at, uh, we got there at about four o'clock in the morning, Friday morning. Um, it was a fully involved, uh, fire. There was active fire in the, um, room. I believe it's the laundry room nearest the bridge. Um, the whole house, um, has smoke damage. There was, um, it was hot. It, um, I would say, I don't know how much information I'm supposed to give out on the source of the fire. Probably say, um, don't run a generator in your house or illegally grow things in your house. So probably be a good thing to do. So, um, the sheriff, uh, the sheriffs were there, um, to conduct that investigation of the source of the fire.
Well, and then the chief does some of that station.
Yeah, so, um, we had a multi-agency response, which we always have, um, when there's any type of structure fire. They dispatch, um, all the agencies. So we had, Blue Lake was first in, uh, we knocked down the fire. And then Arcata came in, Humboldt Bay Fire came in, and Field Brook Fire all responded. And all agencies participated, um, in putting that fire out. We were there for almost four hours. So, um, it was heavily involved. And we're very lucky that, um, one, that no one was hurt because there, the, the tenant was asleep when the fire happened. Um, and we're very lucky that it didn't spread to any vegetation or any other structures. It was a very dangerous setup in that residence.
Okay. All right. Thank you. No, I don't want you to say anything that you shouldn't in, in public. I understand there could be insurance issues and mitigation issues. So I certainly, I just, um, you hadn't heard anything, any follow-up or anything like that. I'm glad to hear no one was hurt. It looks like it's vacant now. Um, and, uh, it's interesting because when I moved to Blue Lake, I think it was only, I don't know, maybe ten years after I moved here, there was another house there originally that burned down. It was, uh, I think it was Merrell Clark's original house. Anyway, um, okay. Well, thank you for that. Um, is there any other questions or comments for Mandy about her staff report?
What happened with the fire? Um, using the horse arena as a large animal evacuation site?
Yeah, so luckily we haven't had to yet. And we're keeping our fingers crossed that we won't have to. Um, so what we did was we, we decided to be a little bit proactive in looking at what resources we would need in case we did need to initiate. Because what we were seeing was that things were happening really fast. Um, we've been working with O E S out of Humboldt County on this issue, but Blue Lake was kind of the first one to take the initiative and actually, you know, start to get ready. And we actually, um, kind of helped push O E S forward in our conversation. Um, you know, it's, it's really interesting when disasters happen and how jurisdictions work together and who declares and who asks for mutual aid and who doesn't. And, um, so Trinity County has not initiated a mutual aid request for the county. So the county's E O C hasn't been activated. Um, so then it really ties a lot of hands and resources as far as, you know, mobilizing, um, for sheltering and things. And so what we saw was there was a need because people, maybe they weren't necessarily needing to evacuate because of fire, but air quality was starting to get really bad. And that was on the Humboldt County side. I mean, the fire is like right up at the Humboldt County line basically. Um, so people were coming this way and also needing to move their animals out of areas that were just being smoke impacted also. We did have some people that, um, evacuated because of actual fire evacuation orders. And they couldn't go east because the highway was closed down after the fire. So they were going to come to the coast and which, and we're kind of the first stopping point. So, um, we had a community member who was great. I, I asked her if she could start making phone calls and start a resource list. So the, the event that we did need to activate for a large animal evacuation site, we would know who to call. So she put out the call and we got all kinds of people. So we have this really nice, um, spreadsheet of resources from feed to troughs to private pastures. Um, and so we've been trying to facilitate requests that come in, um, to get them to private property and make those connections for people rather than having them come to city property, but also being ready to activate if we needed to. So we've been able to help quite a few families. Uh, Blue Lake kind of became the call person, like even O E S was giving my number. And then we've been working with Red Cross. And so Red Cross has been doing the same thing. So he, Andrew's been calling, hey, you know, I've got, at one point I got a call for forty chickens to rehome. So we rehomed like goats and chickens and dogs. And we provided kennels, um, you know, all kinds of things. So I'm, I think our community is amazing. You, you don't necessarily know what's happening, but there's a lot of, um, you know, assistance being given to people from this community. That's been really cool. So we've been able to so far facilitate everyone's request with just getting them in contact with someone versus us having to take that burden on. So.
Great.
Yeah, it's been really good. I think everyone's been working really closely. But it's also kind of showing some of our short calls. You know, we have the new disaster animal response team, which I remember of. And it was like, so what do we do? You know, they're like, I don't know. Like, aren't we like the team? Like, you know, we haven't, we're not organized. You know, we haven't had a meeting or, you know, so that it's, it's giving us an opportunity to all kind of like start moving forward in that direction, which has been good.
Good.
Yeah, we're hoping that, I'm hoping that they get the stuff under control. And I'm hoping that it doesn't come this way and push more people to the coast. So it's, you know, the, the, just the air quality alone is very traumatic.
And I just wanted to report that Karen Barnes canceled her fortieth anniversary party on Labor Day. Um, so she's not going to be, um, renting the park, the arena for that day. I see Lynn Glenn has her hand up. Lynn, did you want to make a question or comment?
Yeah, I think Mandy had said she was going to do an update on the Powers Creek, the general update on item twelve.
I think we kind of covered that back in the previous one.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I can, uh, I didn't, I wasn't really very concise. Um, so at this point, we've mostly just been working on the discussions regarding the, um, the E N A and the D B A requirement. And also going through, um, some of the funding applications to see what kind of information will be required. Um, if the council decides to go forward with the project. Um, but mostly we've just been working on the legal documents at this point. Uh, we have not had any additional meetings with cash at this point for any designs or scoping. Um, so it's mostly just been looking at the legal framework. And so we really can't go any further into the project until we have a legal framework. And I've, I've been really hesitant for us to expend any more resources or staff time until we have some mechanism to recoup our, um, you know, our investment at this point. So this is kind of the, the next step that will move it forward to the next step.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mandy. Any other questions or comments for Mandy on her staff report? Okay, looking at her time, we're at five minutes till nine. We're doing good, council. Um, we're on item thirteen, future agenda items. Is there any future agenda items anybody would like to propose for our next meeting?
Do we need to do council appointments, um, for anything after Olivia resigned and then Ben is here now? Do you need to do that and stuff?
You know, we had, uh, I think, I think we did the queue.
Okay.
Um, but you guys also talked about maybe revisiting your assignments at some point. If you wanted to look at them and see if there was something different or everything around.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's wait.
Hard to.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so I just, I go back to our previous list and mark stuff off. We have the, I don't know, S B thirteen eighty-three. They're always just sitting there in the back of our lines.
Yeah.
We have land acknowledgement, which we talked about doing in like September and October, the discrimination training and, and policy development, anti-discrimination, excuse me, and sheriff's contract, which leads into the correspondence that we have tonight. The park youth policy. And I guess, um, the Powers Creek Restoration Project would be the last one of the two.
That's what I have on my list too. So I kicked off, we had negotiating team, D A C agreement, healthcare, garbage, special meetings. We've been starting to, we're whittling them down, but there's still some that just took a longer time.
Did, um, did council feel the need to have an additional closed session, uh, with Mandy? Or do you feel like our last conversation? Does that, we, we had talked about doing some initial stuff, but I think, are we okay? I guess we need a closed session.
I think we're okay. I mean, we could do one at the next meeting. We can't do one tonight. It's not been agendized. But, um, if there's a need, I, I don't think where there is, but if the council fills or is a need, is it the pleasure of the council?
No, I think we're.
No, we're good. Yeah.
Okay.
Ended it. Yeah.
I thought it was constructive. Yeah. Um, all right. Uh, any other future agenda items? Seeing none, I would like to entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I'm going to.
I'll second.
Motion by Summer Doherty, seconded by Ben McCreath to adjourn. Any further discussion by council? Anything from audience? Back to council for the vote, April?
Uh, you don't have to vote on a adjournment and you don't have, uh, once somebody adjourns, it's done. You're, you're adjourned. You actually can't have any say against.
Okay. Seeing as there's nothing new, we're adjourned. Okay.
We're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. I'm going to try to get Ted's name off here. I don't know if I can. Let's see, how can I do that?
Mandy, I am sent, I just sent you, um, July twenty-seventh updated, um, a minute. And I'm going to send these to you tonight, the, the ones.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry about that. I totally.
Hopefully the formatting isn't too bad. I kind of tried to change a few things. So we'll see.
Okay. No problem.
All right, talk to you later.
April.
Yep, see you guys.
Okay, bye-bye.